The regular Encinitas City Council meeting, I'm calling the meeting to order here. It is 6:00 PM on Wednesday, August 26, 2020. May we please have a roll call?
Um, yes, Councilmember Hubbard, are you on? Okay, Councilmember Mosca?
Here.
Councilmember Crans?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hensy?
Here.
And Mayor Blake Spear?
Here.
All members are present at the moment with the exception of Councilmember Hubbard.
Okay, and I'm going to ask the deputy mayor to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. So today is the actual day of marking the 100-year anniversary of women's right to vote. So Women's Equality Day is celebrated in the United States on August 26, and it commemorates the 1920 adoption of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution. And it prohibits the states and the federal government from denying the right to vote to citizens of the United States on the basis of sex. It was first celebrated in 1973 and is proclaimed each year by the United States President. So today, August 26, 2020, marks the 100-year anniversary of this event. Do we have any oral communications?
Yes, Mayor, we do have three. Uh, the first is Eve Novell Shakwa. Sorry about that, followed by Nancy Logan and then Kathleen Lippett. Uh, Eve, are you on?
Yes.
Okay, you can begin when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Eve Cavell Shakwa. I am a homeowner at 492 Andrew Avenue. I have been elected to speak on behalf of my neighbors. This is in regards to Agenda Item Number 08C. I hope I have that correctly.
No, actually, it's, are, are we taking oral communications for Agenda Items?
No, so we need to, uh, we need to wait for Item 8C and take communication.
I think it's not 8C, it's the Councilmember-initiated item that's after Action Items.
Oh. Well, what would you like to do?
Can I just clarify, Eve, is this regarding a specific intersection?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's not, I don't, I think it's an oral communication.
Okay, well, let's proceed with her, her comment.
Okay, thank you. Regarding the Always Stop Control Initiative for Andrew Avenue, Hillcrest Avenue, and Eolus. The homeowners of Andrew Avenue, Eolus Avenue, and Hillcrest Avenue were not made aware of this initiative prior to this going before the city council. As homeowners, we should have been notified. We should be able to voice our individual concerns. We strongly oppose a three-way stop in our intersection in front of our homes. We would like the opportunity to address our concerns before stop signs are installed. We have written several emails to the city council members. We have had two meetings with Ian Barr, Abraham Bendigan, city traffic engineers. We have met as a group with Councilmember Tony Crans. We believe these stop signs are unwarranted. They will cause congestion, noise, fuel emissions, and pollution. There is a fire hydrant less than five feet of the proposed stop. There have been no accident at this intersection in 50 years. Andrew Avenue and Eolus function as one street, and traffic flows nicely. This intersection is not a main intersection, and it does not have any main cross streets. This is a bend in the road through our neighborhood. These stop signs will directly affect our ability to back out of our driveways. We have offered several reasonable and compromising solutions, as in a yield sign, speed bumps, and at the very, very, we have to make concessions, one stop on the top of the Hillcrest where it merges on to Avenue, Andrew Avenue. As longtime homeowners, we ask that you reconsider this initiative. Please do not ruin our quiet, peaceful neighborhood. Please consider one of our suggestions. Thank you for your consideration tonight, and thank you for your time.
So just to clarify, is that comment related to what we'll be talking about at your Councilmember-initiated item, Councilmember Crans?
Yes.
Okay.
Next is Nancy Logan.
Hello?
All right, you can start when you're ready.
Okay, good evening, Council. With November 3rd fast approaching, I want to talk to you about the Cannabis Activity Zoning Ordinance of Encinitas, also known as Measure H. I'm not sure if you've read the ordinance, which was submitted to the city by an industry of non-Encinitas resident marijuana storefront owners. I would like to share Section 12 on Page 19 of the 20-page proposed ordinance. It reads, "Amendment of this measure. This measure, except as specified herein, shall only be amended by a subsequent vote of the people. Notwithstanding any other law or provision in this measure, the city council shall have the right and the ability to amend or modify this measure only under the following circumstances," semicolon, "after this measure has been in effect in the city of Encinitas for a period of three years." I know you don't have Section 12 in front of you, but I particularly want to focus on the three years. Are you willing to face the ramifications of what Encinitas could look like without local control for three years? And after three years, we still need an election to change it. I can't imagine any of you responsible elected city officials would want to be dictated to by this measure's language, whether you're in favor of it or not. I also want to remind you that Encinitas would not get one dime of tax money from marijuana businesses. How will the cost of regulation be recouped? Please think seriously about what Measure H could do to Encinitas. We trust you to do the right thing for this amazing city, which we are proud to call home. Let's keep it that way. We want to protect Encinitas. The proponents of Measure H want to profit off Encinitas. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. Next is Kathleen Lippett. Kathleen, are you on?
I do not see Kathleen in the meeting.
Okay. Um, then if Kathleen is not here, then that concludes oral communications.
Kathy, um, give me one second, I think, uh, dial-in number maybe.
Oh, okay, okay.
Can you hear me now?
Is this Kathleen?
It is. Thank you.
Great, you can start whenever you're ready.
I actually would like to speak on Item 10B, so my apologies, and I'll wait for that item.
Oh, you're also, you're also signed up for that. Okay, I'll cross you off of oral communications. Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, that does conclude oral communications.
Okay, thank you. Uh, now we have our report from closed session.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Council, and members of the public. The city council met in closed session on August 20th regarding city manager employment, and there's no reportable actions following that closed session. Today, the city council met on a number of items. Item one was conference with the real property negotiator regarding Lucadia Heights HOA at 301 Crocus Court. Uh, the council met and got direction and gave direction to their city negotiator. No reportable actions on that item. Item two, closed session, another conference with real property negotiator regarding property at 850 Higia Avenue. The city council met with their city negotiator and gave the negotiator direction and authority in that item. On item number three, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation. The city council met, uh, with legal counsel regarding Encinitas residents for Responsible Development versus the city, and conveyed a settlement demand from the plaintiff council to the council, and that was discussed. No reportable actions on that item. Item four, council with legal, uh, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Char versus Hagan versus City of Encinitas. I wanted to report out the Councilmember Hubbard was conflicted and did not participate or appear in that item. The council, uh, heard from their legal counsel and discussed that litigation. No reportable action. On item five, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Walker versus City of Encinitas. Deputy Mayor Shay Hensy was conflicted out and did not participate in that discussion. Council heard from special counsel in that matter. No reportable actions on that item. Item number six, conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation on a claim by Deck Life's Forbidden Juicery. The council discussed that claim with special counsel. No reportable actions on that item. On item seven, conference with legal counsel, significant exposure. The council discussed the claim with special counsel regarding flooding of 10 properties on Nardo and Arcadia. No reportable actions. The last item, item eight, conference with legal counsel, significant exposure. The city council discussed this claim of four flooded properties on Nardo with special counsel, but there are no reportable actions on that item. And that concludes our report out for the closed session.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any changes to the posted agenda?
Yes, Mayor, Item 8H is being removed from the agenda by staff. Um, an email was forwarded to you. This was for a grant, and in reading the fine print, staff determined that the grant is for low-income and disadvantaged communities. And so therefore, um, we would not be competitive in that area. So Item 8H has been removed from the agenda. And then for the consent counter, Item 8G has been pulled by public.
Okay, so we have the remainder in front of us.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Second it unless, the other, unless Tony didn't get in there.
Oh, okay. And so, record, I'm gonna start voting. Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosca?
Yes.
Councilmember Crans?
Yes.
Oh, where did it go? Hold on. My both screens just did. Give me one second, my computer has just gone crazy. I don't know what it's doing. Sorry about that. Okay, let's start again. Councilmember? Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosca?
Yes.
Councilmember Crans?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Hensy?
Yes.
And Mayor Blake Spear?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so let's go to the pulled item.
That is Item 8G. And we have, our first speaker is John Dewald.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you can start whenever you're ready.
All right, this, my name is John Dewald. I'm a resident of Cardiff, and I'm the president of the EACEA. I just want to have a few brief comments to the, uh, renewal or extension of the exclusive negotiating agreement. Um, we had a successful conference with council, with the council a while ago. We set up a number of tasks, unfortunately. Things like COVID has kind of interfered with getting a lot of those things done. I would like to say, though, I thank staff and, and Jennifer for their efforts and taking over maintenance and following up on a variety of, of issues that we've seen at the site. Uh, we still need to complete those, uh, items from our workshop, and, uh, really have not been able to, uh, discuss the next steps beyond that. And so, um, we're hoping that this extension will get us through to December and at some point in time, uh, as things, uh, recede in terms of, again, uh, with completing those items while discussing a long-term arraign for EACEA. Uh, again, want to thank this, the city staff for their efforts during these hard times and continuing to maintain the site and deal with the vandalism acts and so on. Thank you.
Thank you, and our next speaker is Dan Vaughn. Dan, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, we can hear you now, Dan. You can start whenever you're ready.
Okay, great, thank you. So I think, uh, EACEA has had a big vision for the project, and, and, um, it's been a long time in coming. But I note that we're bleeding about $600,000, $700,000,000 a year servicing that debt. And I'm, I'm worried that with the, the no-net loss impending, triggering for the housing element, that we're gonna need to find additional affordable housing sites, uh, in the city. And I, I think it's time that we maybe look at the Pacific View Property, uh, as a potential, uh, tool in, in fighting, um, in, in addressing that glaring need. Um, and so I recommend that we, uh, don't go forward with an exclusive negotiating right with EACEA. I think they certainly deserve a seat at the table, uh, but I don't think they should have the only seat at the table. I think there should be, uh, a, a community conversation about how to use that property best for the public. Good, thank you.
That does conclude speaker.
Okay, thank you. Does any council member want to speak?
Yeah, I raised my hand there. And I appreciate that, uh, COVID has created quite a, a, a challenging environment for trying to move several of these issues forward when following our, our workshop. And so, uh, at least for the time being, uh, continuing the agreement makes sense to me. Uh, to, to Dan's issue relating to no-net loss, uh, I do know that there are, will be some challenges, uh, down the road with that, but quite frankly, uh, Pacific View would be pretty low on any list that I put together for, um, you know, adding, uh, acreage to the buffer for, um, the impacts of the no-net loss law. I think that it's pretty clear that we've got a transit corridor. That is, uh, we've seen some, uh, architectural initiatives to show how, um, creating a mobility hub at our transit center downtown is, is, seems quite viable. So there's, there's one, uh, step. Uh, there are several other alternatives. So, um, I get that he's, uh, and many of our residents are concerned about the impacts of the no-net loss laws, but Pacific View, to me, uh, won't be entering that picture anytime soon. So with that, I would, uh, move approval of this item and, and tell, uh, the city manager and staff that I'm looking forward to having all the data gathered and, and making a decision soon on whether to continue the relationship with EACEA.
I'll second it.
Are you ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosca?
Yes.
Councilmember Crans?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hensy?
Yes.
And Mayor Blake Spear?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Uh, now we're on to our first action item, which is Item 10A. This is Education and Enforcement of Facial Covering Requirement of County Public Health Order. And we have our Assistant City Manager, Mark Delin.
And before Mark starts, Mayor, we do have one speaker.
Okay, would you, okay, well, I guess I will begin now. My first Zoom, so bear with me, so. So tonight's council action is to authorize the city manager to implement a three-month pilot program for as-needed facial covering education, compliance, and enforcement. The maximum cost will not exceed $15,000, and it is theoretically reimbursable. The goal of this program is to help increase compliance with the county public health order with respect to the requirements to wear facial coverings in certain situations. You know, the virus numbers have been decreasing in San Diego County, but as recently as today, county officials stated that the virus is not over, and we must continue to stay the course adhering to the public, the county public health order. So after physical distancing, our state, federal, local health, um, public health agencies are unanimous in that the wearing of facial coverings is the next most important factor in preventing the spread of COVID-19. As we learn more about the virus, we know that the primary mechanism for spreading the virus is through airborne droplets that are exhaled by an infected person and inhaled by others. The only way to decrease the presence of airborne droplets is through the wearing of a facial covering over the mouth and nose to serve as barriers. So generally, even, um, like surgical masks, like I will hold up something now, you can see, those are effective in intercepting about 75% of the particles. And I just read a, a study by, um, UC Davis saying that these actually are very protective of the wearer as well. So mask-wearing is required by the county health order in many different circumstances, including being indoors in a public space, obtaining healthcare services, using public transportation, including taxis and ride-share, most enclosed work areas where you're interacting with other people, and then while outdoors in public spaces, when physical distances of at least six feet cannot be obtained. So there are, there are some exceptions to these requirements, such as when you're eating food, et cetera. And these are all noted in the staff report. So we're calling this an Education to Achieve Compliance Program. And staff has been quite busy in the public education program, um, regarding the need to wear facial coverings. We've been active on social media. We've provided signage for downtown businesses, and we're, we're also in the process of creating yard signs. Um, staff has also created a task force with youth members of the KAL OES YERA program, which is Youth Emergency Readiness Ambassadors, to design window signage for businesses and also mask designs. Then hopefully, you have seen the many colorful banners that we have in Highway 101 and at El Camino Real. But despite our efforts, I mean, not everybody is wearing facial coverings, and, um, and the wearing is not universal. I mean, we're doing better than some areas, I'll tell you that from just, you know, looking around, but it's, it's not, it's not there yet. And we're still continuing to receive complaints from the public. So what we're proposing here is a program to increase compliance with the mandate through an education and enforcement program conducted by the sheriff. We're proposing to focus on high-density pedestrian areas and pedestrian choke points where the six-foot social distancing cannot be obtained. So the primary areas will be downtown, and then the beach staircases. And we're focusing the program on weekends, when the population density in these areas will be the highest. We're recommending a three-month pilot program of four-hour shifts of the sheriff on Saturdays and Sundays. And the sheriff's deputies will be focusing on educating people on the benefits of masks and the requirements to wa, to wear masks, and will also distribute city-provided masks to people that do not have them. So the program that we're proposing to do will be similar to what Del Mar is doing, although for a shorter, uh, duration. Um, the city of Del Mar has reported back on the success of their first two weekends. Their city manager described the program as being quite successful. The deputy is very personable and engaging, and no citations were needed to be issued. And Salona Beach is starting a similar program this weekend. Um, other Southern California cities with mask enforcement programs include Hermosa Beach, Beverly Hills, Calabasas, Glendale, Manhattan Beach, Santa Monica, and West Hollywood, and there probably are more. So why are we using the sheriff instead of our own code enforcement? Um, and there's some specific reasons. Enforcement powers are delegated to the sheriff under the California Government Code and the Health and Safety Code. And city's code enforcement staffs are not actually empowered as peace offers, peace officers in order to enforce this county health order. And the city does not have an applicable municipal code section, and we would need to act, some kind of ordinance or pass a resolution in order to have staff enforce this. And another issue is that we do not have available staffing. We do, our code enforcement staff does not work on weekends, and we, our two officers are fully utilized with their existing workload. And finally, and maybe most importantly, the sheriff's officers carry the weight of law, and they have the backup if needed. They have the power to issue citations, and they're trained in dealing with difficult situations and in de-escalating conflicts. Finally, I did ask the question of our main streets in our chamber. Is facial covering education enforcement good for business? Are people, um, more inclined to go into the business area that are well-enforced for masks? And the, the answer was yes, and a strong answer of yes. They, they surveyed many different businesses, and they also did appreciate making the vast, the masks available. A lot of people that do not have masks will take a mask, and they will wear it. And so, um, I am available for questions, and we do have Lieutenant Todd Norton of the Sheriff's Department, um, also on Zoom, um, if, if there's any questions for the sheriff.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's have the public speaker, and then we can ask questions and make comments.
Our public speaker is Jim Mosher. Jim, are you on the line?
I'm on the line, Kathy, can you read?
I can hear you, Jim, go ahead and start when you're ready.
Okay, well, you know, as a 34-year resident of Encinitas, Mayor and city, city council members, I oppose using tax dollars for the purpose of having sheriff's deputies patrol downtown in the beaches to find people who are not wearing masks. There's already sufficient signage around the city, daily reminders about wearing masks on television, media, and local stores. Now walk the beach frequently, and citizens are maintaining social distancing and are using masks appropriately. People are aware of the benefits of wearing a mask, and the cases continue to decline in the county. The County 211 report shows this. The report also shows that food insecurity and housing-related issues continue to be in need. Now sheriff's deputies, I think, have more important tasks on their plate, and the $15,000 under consideration would be better allocated to helping food insecure residents in the city for providing assistance with utility bills. I strongly urge you to not implement this three-month program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. That does conclude comments on this item.
Okay, thank you. Does any council colleague wish to make a comment?
Yes, I, I have my hand up.
Okay, I don't see it, but you can speak.
Oh, okay. Um, so the one thing I'm concerned about, the, uh, ordinance that we wrote up, is I would like to see us address the mask with the breathing, um, I don't know what it's called, the filter. Basically, it's, it looks like a mask, and then it's got a little, like, place for you to breathe all your air right out. So it's a fake mask. And I see a lot of folks wearing those, and if I was in a restaurant, near one of those people, I would not want to be there, because if you are somebody who is compromised at all in your immune system, and, you know, yeah, I'm real aware of that now, but I'm also aware of how many other people in our city have the same issues, or frankly, can be super healthy and just don't want to get COVID. Um, so when you have these people running around with the little filters there, and most of them don't have a real filter behind it, that mask does absolutely nothing. And we need to give our sheriffs the ability to, to either check for people and say, "Hey, do you have a filter? I'm sorry, but you can't go in this store, this restaurant, unless you're wearing a real mask." I think that's, I, I've seen too many of them to just ignore it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Crans?
Thank you, yes. Um, you know, this is one of those issues that I struggle with, because, um, it seems to me that, um, you know, you could spend a lot of time and resources trying to get everyone to comply. Um, it's a little frustrating to me that we can't, uh, you know, accept the public health order the way it's written, and everybody kind of get on board. But what I have found in this particular instance of this pandemic is that there are a, of, of, quite, there is quite an array of opinions about, uh, any number of things related to it. It reminds me a little bit about, uh, climate change, and, and, uh, there are some people who are still absolutely convinced there's no such thing. Um, my own approach to that particular issue is that, what if, let's, let's just assume that, um, there is climate change, and that it's absolutely essential that we take action to address it. And so that's kind of what has guided me all along in my service on the city council. Here again, this is one of those things where you can argue, uh, whether the type of mask that Jody is talking about is effective, or how effective it is, and, and whether any mask at all is effective at, at, uh, reducing the, the occurrence of these infections. But in the end, if it's going to help even a little bit, I, I'm inclined to, um, you know, support it. And so I've been doing my best to wear my mask, um, and I really appreciate it when I see people in public. We are, uh, I think- We are, I think, getting a significant amount of compliance, which is, I think, consistent with the mindset of most people who live in this city. But there are still those people who insist on going without masks, and, you know, it's, I think, necessary, in fact, to, you know, engage them with someone who has the authority to address their unwillingness to follow the county health orders. So in spite of some reservations about the idea of trying to enforce this sort of thing, and the concern that it may create a group of people who are out trying to cause trouble and instigate the contact with the deputy, I think that it's important that we take this step, so I will be supporting this.
I think when it comes to--
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I put my hand back up.
Did you want to, did you want to speak?
Kind of pivot off of what Councilman Krantz was saying, you know, and this is something that's for the greater good. And in the countries where they really got onto masks early, it's been successful. The science is there, that if we all wear masks, what we're really doing is saying, let's let our businesses succeed, let's give them a chance, let's not have to shut down again, and let's get back to where we can all be out in public. And, yeah, it makes commerce work. So it's a hard argument in my mind for folks to go against, but you're right, we're still going to have some that do. And I would much rather have the sheriff talk to them than have to put the employees in a restaurant or a store on the spot to do it. It puts them in an impossible situation. So it would be nice to have the enforcement to back them up.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mosca.
Yeah, no, I understand what Councilmember Krantz is saying, and I think science is crystal clear that face mask, facial coverings help, social distancing helps. And I think that everything that we've been doing in terms of education has really helped keep our rate low, and I'm really happy with what the city staff has done hence far and what some of our nonprofits have done. Councilmember Henze is out there at the beaches, and other folks are out there handing out facial rings and encouraging people to wear facial coverings. I think that type of education really does work, and I think most people, I think if you polled American society, I would imagine that a very large majority of people would say that facial coverings and six-foot distancing is reasonable. You know, I think, so where it comes down to me is this kind of education versus enforcement. Mark, you kind of talked about that the sheriff says more kind of education, and, you know, to the extent that it's education, I really do appreciate it and agree with it. I've had a chance to talk to some other cities that have implemented it, because I'll be honest, I was a bit concerned, and I've talked to other cities, and they say it's been successful. But I really think that the education is the key thing here. I don't want to have a situation where we're basically using our law enforcement to cite a number of people. Of course, if there's an anomaly situation, you know, you have somebody that's belligerent and is putting other people at risk, then I think law enforcement even now would cite that person, and perhaps even more so. And so I hope that what this is, is just a continuation of our educational program where we're just taking it to the next step. We're going to continue to be as creative as possible to make sure that people are aware of the need to wear facial coverings, and if they don't have one, we can provide one for you, especially in those areas where they can't maintain social distancing. And again, I'll support this, but my support is really about, you know, using law enforcement to help in that education, but not necessarily having a situation where we have a lot of enforcement, where we're basically citing people. I just, I don't think that it's a prudent thing to do, where we're basically starting to cite a lot of people in our downtown. So I will support it. But again, it should be that we're using all the tools in the tool chest to educate and to really persuade people to wear facial coverings when they can't maintain that six-foot distancing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Henze.
Thank you. So I'm curious to know, are we able to begin this program before Labor Day?
I will have to check on the availability. I believe so, I believe so. I'm told that the deputies, the sheriff does have deputies available on the overtime basis, but that would be a good suggestion to get that going for the Labor Day weekend.
Yeah, I think--
Norman, do you have any comment?
We are available. We can start as soon as you guys want to implement this.
Okay, that's good to know. So I just had a couple of comments. I am in support of this. After having spent the last seven weeks, every weekend down at the beach at Moonlight, really so much of this is just about education. And I'd say 90% of the people who come through the beach without masks, they just don't know that they're supposed to be wearing them at that point. And so, you know, I do think that it is important to have education. I don't know how important it is to have deputies specifically doing that kind of education and outreach, but I've heard enough from community members that want this that I'm going to support it tonight. There are a few pain points, I think, that I would like to see if we can have addressed, and one is definitely on Cornish Avenue there, because I know there are some long-term solutions that we're seeking for the behavior that we're seeing along that parking area, but also that the deputy would be able to include that in the rounds and make sure that that's an area that's getting a lot of oversight, because there are quite a few young people there, and a lot of people who are, you know, using that as a place to spread out, hang out for a long time, when really the purpose is just supposed to be parking. And it's creating an undue burden, I think, for the neighbors. Additionally, I like that we're targeting the downtown area and the beach access points, but in the evenings at stone steps and at beacons, there are pretty big gatherings of people, and I don't know that they come all together when they arrive, but they're, you know, standing within six feet of one another. And I know that there are a lot of folks in my neighborhood who are accustomed to going to the sunset at nighttime, who don't go anymore because these gatherings are so large. And I would like to request that we can add stone steps and beacons as two locations that are also on the rounds. I hear Jim Mosher's comments that, you know, I wish that this $15,000 could go towards rental relief and utilities relief, and I think that that is definitely a place where we need to focus and have focused on, and I wish we could continue doing that. But I also think that this request comes so frequently from our community members that we can't ignore it any longer. And so being that our numbers are going down, that's wonderful. I'm so glad that that trend continues, but we still are having numbers, and it still is our responsibility to make sure we're doing our very best to keep community spread from happening downtown and at the beaches. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Hubbard. Wait, you're muted.
What I said is I'm chatty Cathy tonight. Okay, I just want to circle back around. I'm going to try and take your place, Mosca, is that I also want to stress that I'm happy, I want the law enforcement, because I think it gives it a little more gravitas, but yes, I want it to start with education. I want it to be a pleasant conversation. And when they get pushed back from somebody who doesn't want to do it, that's when you give a ticket, but that's certainly not the approach that I want, and I certainly don't want that to be taken by my strong stand for this. I want this to be something where it starts with, hey, you need to have a mask on, do you have one on you, et cetera? I also want to circle back, I feel really strongly about these masks with the filter pieces on them, because they are no different than, it's kind of the person who doesn't want to wear a mask, and it's a fake mask, so it's a way to not be confrontational, but really not taking care of people. And I'm really hoping we can do something here tonight and add that in so that we make sure that our sheriffs, when they see those masks, talk to that person and just verify, you've got to, can I see the filter? Or it's not working, you got to use some, you got to use a real mask, happen to have one here for you. So I'm hoping that you guys will support me on this.
Okay, I'll just add a couple of my comments. So I think that the idea of having a deputy working at times where we have these hotspots developed, like beacons, stone steps, Cornish, the entrances to the beach, and around our downtown, and then also our areas where we might have complaints, because we'll occasionally get complaints about a business that's not enforcing mask-wearing with any of their employees or any of the customers coming in. And I would like us to be able to have this deputy also go to that spot, a business spot on El Camino Real, or not just be limited to the downtown and the beaches. I think the public comment was a good point about needing to do a lot of different things with money, but I think part of it was implying that the deputy might be walking along a wide-open beach, looking for somebody to talk to or to ticket, and that's not my vision of this at all. It's that we do have these hotspots, and we do have complaints, as the deputy mayor referred to, the number of community complaints and hopes for us to do more, and enforcement, I think, has been persistent here. So I did want to ask the assistant city manager or the sheriff deputy who's here tonight about doing those types of responses for businesses when we get complaints. Is that part of--
Lieutenant Norton.
Yeah.
No, that's definitely something that we can do, is as we get the complaints in, we can definitely send people over there. I just want to let you know that in the other cities that we've been working in, it's been a pretty positive experience that we've had with the people. Our goal is for voluntary compliance and education, and I would say almost at 100%, we're getting compliance with everybody, and they're actually positive about the encounters that they've been having.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's good to hear. I mean, I think as the deputy mayor was saying, she spent the last seven weekends, I did just a shift on a weekend, and it is, we don't want the deputy to be taking the place of those volunteers, because the deputy, we could pay this money for that person to stand at Moonlight Beach, right outside of the safety center and right next to the volunteers, and have contacts for four hours straight, but I don't think that's really the goal. So I just want to make sure that the direction from the city manager, which is, I assume, where this will eventually be coming from, where to go, is to focus on these places where we have, where we do, we have these persistent complaints and/or a hotspot complaint, where there is, like I said, a business where they're not requiring employees or customers to wear it.
Adam Mayer?
Yes.
This is Jennifer. Yes, that's exactly what we plan to do, is focus on the areas that we know that we've had issues with. If, within a three-month pilot, another area comes up, but yes, it's really the areas that we've had issues with, not going out to the beach to find folks. And we certainly appreciate all of the help from Deputy Mayor Henze and volunteers handing out masks. We know they're there. This is just to make sure in some of our more crowded and populated areas that we have education, yes.
If I might add, we are getting a list of non-compliant businesses that we're just starting to get from the county that we can forward to the sheriff, you know, to have them follow up with. And as far as the valve masks, I do agree with you, Councilmember Hubbard, that these are insufficient in terms of protecting others, and we can do that, we can ask the sheriff to, you know, notify people, and we can cover this in our own public information materials as staff, what are good masks and what aren't good masks. So I think, I think we can, we've heard you, we can take care of that, and we concur with your research on that.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much. Then I think, yes, Deputy Mayor.
I just want to add that we have two more weeks, and I would love to, if anybody's listening and they'd like to help us out at the beach, we still have shifts that we need filled. And I think that after having participated in this effort, it's really clear how effective it is. And so if there are other places in the city that we're seeing this need, like the community park or other parks, that we should, I want folks who are listening to know that we can make it possible to host a volunteer booth there, too, and just to contact me. And I remembered a point that I wanted to make, because this whole thing started in that the weekend before the Fourth of July, the governor asked us to close our beach parking lots, and that request came in too late for us to be able to do anything about it. And I've noticed that Northern California beaches are going to be closed on Labor Day, and so I just wanted to make sure that if a request comes, that we do that here, too, not close the beaches, but just close the parking lots, that we're thinking about that and we're ready for that, and that we, you know, can do what's necessary to manage that holiday and the effect in Encinitas.
Okay, was that a motion?
I will make a motion to approve this item, the three-month pilot for deputy to do an education compliance, and also that we are preparing ourselves for the Labor Day weekend and considering the possible alternatives we might need to take.
I will second. So this is basically staff recommendation, and then some other comments that have been added in that staff has heard. So seeing no further comments, let's go ahead and vote.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mosca?
Yes.
Councilmember Krantz?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henze?
Yes.
And Mayor Blake Spear?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. So our second item is on flavored tobacco prohibition. Do we have any public comments on this? City clerk, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. We have six.
We have six, okay. Let's hear the staff report, and then we will hear the comments.
Okay, I don't, is, Lillian, is Nick Zorn doing the staff report?
Yes, Kathy, and he is standing by and ready to proceed.
Okay, there we go. Thank you.
Can everyone hear me? All right, good evening, City Council. Tonight, we are here to discuss amendments to Title 11 Health of the Encinitas Municipal Code and Ordinance Number 2013, titled "An Ordinance of the City of Encinitas Adopting Amendments to Title 11 of the Encinitas Municipal Code to Prohibit the Sale and Distribution of Flavored Tobacco Products in the City of Encinitas." As the background for this ordinance, as of November 13th of 2019, the City Council approved the Youth Commission Work Plan with Goal Number 10, the Youth Commission to review vaping ordinance passed by the San Diego County, and to make a recommendation to the City Council on the topic of vaping for the City of Encinitas. From December 2019 to May 2020, the City, or Encinitas Youth Commission worked on Goal Number 10 and its approved work plan for a total of six months. During that time, the commission conducted research, held discussion, and was provided two presentations, one from the San De Guido Alliance for Drug-Free Youth, and two from San Diego County Supervisor Nathan Fletcher. In addition to the significant amount of research conducted by the Encinitas Youth Commission, also monitored and reviewed by the City of Solana Beaches, or, and reviewed the City of Solana Beaches ordinance that was adopted in April of 2020, which bans all sale and distribution of flavored tobacco products. On May 6, 2020, the Encinitas Youth Commission voted unanimously to recommend to the City Council to prohibit the sale and distribution of flavored tobacco products in the City of Encinitas, similar to the adopted ordinance of Solana Beach. On May 20, 2020, the Youth Commission recommendation was supported unanimously by the City Council with a recommendation to staff to draft an ordinance for your consideration. Additionally, the state legislature is currently considering SB 793, also known as flavored tobacco products. The Senate bill would be a statewide ban on flavored tobacco products with an exemption for PUKA, or also known as SHisha. The current status of the bill as of Monday, August 24, 2020, per the legislature.ca.gov is an in-Senate concurrence and assembly amendment pending. However, local news has reported as of yesterday and today that California, or that California has passed a statewide flavored tobacco ban. Media outlets may be able to publicize the passage of the state law faster than the legislature is able to update the status of the bill online. Between Monday and today-- Between Monday and today, Wednesday afternoon, the city has received eight emails about the agenda item. Those communications were forwarded to the members of the City Council prior to this meeting. As a part of the analysis, the city staff recommends that incorporating the Youth Commission's recommendation to prohibit the sale and distribution of flavored tobacco products by adding a new chapter within Title Eleven of the Encinitas Municipal Code, Chapter eleven point eleven, sale and distribution of flavored tobacco products. The addition of the Chapter eleven point eleven prohibits the sale and distribution of flavored tobacco products in all applicable state and federal laws, consistent with the San Diego County and City of Solana Beaches ordinances by adding the definitions related to flavored tobacco products, restrictions on sale, distribution and flavored tobacco products, and the operative date of this chapter. As directed by the City Council at the May twenty, twenty twenty meeting, city staff has incorporated an exemption for shisha or hu- hookah tobacco products and that, um, have been approved by the FDA for sale as a tobacco association product. Additionally, city staff recommends amending Chapter eleven point one zero, sale, display and promotion of tobacco products to be consistent with the Federal Food, Drug and Cosmetic Act, as amended or commonly known as Tobacco Twenty-One, which prohibits the sale of tobacco products to persons twenty-one years of age, which went into effect nationwide on December twentieth, two thousand nineteen. The implementation of Ordinance twenty twenty thirteen began with early notification to all businesses that potentially sell flavored tobacco products within the City of Encinitas. Staff has sent direct mail as of August twelfth, two thousand twenty to all licensed retailers that potentially sell flavored tobacco products, including gas stations, convenience stores, grocery stores, drugstores, et cetera, to inform retailers of consideration of the draft ordinance twenty twenty thirteen to prohibit the sale and distribution of flavored tobacco products. As of today, as previously mentioned, we have received eight emails between Monday and this afternoon on Wednesday from the public or retailers. The city staff has incorporated an operative date of the ordinance of January first, two thousand twenty-one, which will provide existing businesses located within the city limits an opportunity to sell through current inventory of flavored tobacco products prior to the prohibition going into effect. If the draft ordinance is, uh, adopted on September ninth, two thousand twenty, this will provide merchants with almost four months to sell through remaining flavored tobacco products before the operative date of this ordinance. Education and enforcement of the proposed ordinance will be managed by the city's Code Enforcement Division of Development Services Department. Enforcement will be initiated when a complaint is received, prompting an investigation by code enforcement. As with most code enforcement cases in the city, the division will pursue voluntary compliance with the merchant and will educate on all applicable regulations as it pertains to the violation. Additional enforcement will be consistent with Chapter One of the Encinitas Municipal Code. This concludes the presentation portion of the proposed amendments before you this evening. Twenty, or Ordinance twenty twenty thirteen, titled An Ordinance of the City of Encinitas Adopting Amendments to Title Eleven of the Encinitas Municipal Code to Prohibit the Sale, Distribution of Flavored Tobacco Products in the City of Encinitas. Staff is available for discussion or further questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, let's hear the public comments.
Okay, our first speaker is Barbara Gordon.
Barbara is not in the meeting.
Okay, how about, uh, Peggy Walker?
Good evening, Council. My name is Peggy Walker and I've worked in tobacco use prevention, education with schools for many years. And I just want to commend the Youth Commission for their awareness of the dramatic role. E-cigarettes have played in the increase in youth tobacco use. Unfortunately, e-cigarette use reversed so much of the hard work dedicated to reducing youth tobacco use in the past, and I can tell you that that work spanned many decades. So I wholly support this ordinance. I have reservations that hookah tobacco is excluded, but I believe it's better to move forward with approval during this COVID pandemic. This ordinance is also pertinent, I might add, in light of the fact that many cities and schools have been deal, been dealing with serious toxic waste issues related to the discard of vaping products and flavored e-cigarettes, which, as you may or may not know, e-cigarettes are toxic waste products. One more note, um, an earlier speaker mentioned Measure H. I hope that this council, the Youth Commission, and the public voting, uh, the voting public will pay close attention to the wording of this tobacco ordinance. Every health issue or warning mentioned in this tobacco ordinance also applies to marijuana use. It does not make sense to allow another equally, if not more detrimental and highly addictive drug, marijuana into our community than to allow dangerous enticing flavored tobacco products. Measure H would do just that. It passed in November, so let's vote no. Thank you, and again, I appreciate the Youth Commission's work on this ordinance.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Judy Strang.
Good evening, City Council. Judy Strang here for San Diego Alliance. It's a pleasure to share with our, with you all, our enthusiasm for this ordinance and our appreciation to the Youth Commission and the staff members who have worked so hard with them over the last years, Travis Carlin and Christian Hernandez. Uh, we also want to thank our colleagues, American Heart, Lung, Cancer, and Tobacco-Free Youth, who I understand have sent letters to the City Council. I know in their letters that they also mentioned their concern about hookah, shisha products being eliminated from the proposal the Youth Commission originally sent forward to you and that they asked for your reconsideration. We would, San Diego Alliance, would like to ask the City Council to consider their suggestion and return shisha products to, uh, your consideration for this particular ordinance. We thank the city for their energy, the staff time that has been given to writing this ordinance and for all that you do for the youth of Encinitas. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nancy Perry Sheridan. Nancy, are you there?
Nancy is in the meeting, but it looks like her phone is muted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Now we can hear you. Thank you. You can start when you're ready.
Thank you. This is Nancy Perry Sheridan. And I'd like to recognize and thank our City Council members for the support of the Youth Commission and the staff recommendation to ban the sale and distribution of flavored tobacco products and to raise the minimum age to buy these items. This is really good public health policy news. However, I strongly urge you to consider including hookah and hookah products in this amendment. The novelty of the water pipe is highly appealing to the teenage brain, which is wired to relish totally new and different experiences. Both as a parent and as a social worker, working with the local high, high school students, I've had the personal insight and the privileged knowledge of many teens and their initial experimentation with tobacco and marijuana has been through hookahs. These days, we have all had to face the unintended consequences of mixed messages from our elected officials on a broader political scale. And I feel that the message would be crystal clear to all if hookah and hookah products are included in this ordinance. And I ask you to please consider adding them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kelly McCormick.
Good evening. This is Kelly McCormick. I'm the parent of two teenagers who have grown up attending Encinitas schools and I run a youth mentor program. I urge you to approve a ban on the sale of flavored tobacco. As you know, the number of teens who vape is skyrocketing. Kids also are using flavored smokeless tobacco and other products. This is no accident. It's a deliberate attempt by the tobacco industry to attract and addict young users. The industry has carefully studied teen preferences and knows the vast majority of adult tobacco users get hooked before the age of eighteen. I applaud the Encinitas Youth Commission for studying the impact of flavored tobacco and recommending this ban. The commissioners looked at the statistics on teen vaping and at the industry marketing campaigns. They saw the impact on their peers and in their schools. They know firsthand that flavored tobacco is too easy to obtain and hard to leave behind. A study published last week in the Journal of the American Medical Association Pediatrics revealed that nearly half of teens who vape say they wanted to quit. What they don't realize is that the nicotine salts used in many vapes are proving to be even more addictive than traditional cigarettes. They taste good and they're easy to conceal. A teen once shared with me that an acquaintance had used four e-cigarette cartridges in one day. He shared it on his Snapchat story. Each single cartridge contains as much nicotine as one and a half packs of cigarettes or more. Did you do the math? That's six packs in one day at least. And he's not alone. It's more common than you would think. I would like to ask that you consider adding hookah tobacco to the sales ban as well. While hookah has traditional roots, it has now become a tool of the tobacco industry. It comes in flavors like birthday cake and gummy bears and continues to gain popularity among teens. A study of teen users in San Diego found that nearly half falsely believed hookah was safer than cigarettes. This is not the case, since hookah sessions expose users to the smoke for a longer period of time and the smoke contains carcinogens, heavy metals, volatile flavor compounds, and even carbon monoxide due to the way it's heated. Thank you so much for placing attention on this important issue. In approving a citywide ban on flavored tobacco, you will be doing a great service to our community.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Kathleen Lipit.
Good evening, City Council. As a public health practitioner, I support and I'm grateful for your intention to protect children from flavored e-cigarettes that are intended to addict youth. For the sake of a consistent public policy approach to preventing underage use of flavored tobacco products, I hope you will consider applying this ban to marijuana products as well. If children are to be protected against substance abuse, it must be noted that it is the marijuana industry that promotes the drug use used most frequently and first and which impacts their brains as much or ser- more seriously than tobacco. Like tobacco, marijuana products come in flavors designed to appeal to them. The marijuana industry is as culpable as the tobacco industry in targeting children with their products, using messaging strategies that are not just similar but often identical. The marijuana industry does not deserve a path on this issue. Both the tobacco and marijuana industries have been allowed to continue down the path to addicting another generation of youth to their products. Please support a tobacco flavor ban on both tobacco and marijuana products and please include shisha and hookah. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and that does conclude speakers.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to the council with any questions or comments. I thought I saw Councilwoman Mosca's hand up, but I don't see him anymore.
I, my hand is up.
Oh, okay, okay, go ahead.
I don't know if it went down or, or what, but, um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, very happy to speak to this item, happy that it's here. Uh, you and I, uh, Madam Mayor, uh, asked the Youth Commission to look at this, um, several months ago because we saw this as a, as a serious issue for our, our city and, and many other cities in the state of California. And I'm very happy that we did. Uh, this is obviously an issue that, that impacts our youth, uh, more than any other group. Um, and I mean, you know, a, many times that, that I hear from, from our kids, um, that they see this, uh, activity. They see, um, flavored tobacco on, at their middle schools, uh, it's rampant at high schools. And so it was important to include our Youth Commission. Uh, and this is, um, I think one of the first times that, that I've been on the City Council where they've really kind of dug in on an important public policy and they've helped us out. And so kudos to the Youth Commission. Uh, thank you to, uh, the Parks and Rec staff, uh, who staffed that commission. And, uh, thank you for all of the, the, uh, experts, including, uh, Nathan Fletcher, the Board of Supervisors for the County of San Diego, who helped our Youth Commission come up with, uh, this proposal. Uh, I think it's heading in the right direction. Uh, obviously, smoking is a serious issue for our society. Uh, it has tremendous amount of costs. Uh, the last thing we want to do is have a situation where, uh, tobacco, uh, we find a, a situation where tobacco is becoming cooler or it's, it's, it's becoming something that, that, that becomes more appealing to, uh, our youth to use. And so I think that this is a, a really good ordinance. Uh, it's a step in the right direction. While some people say that, that we should be, uh, including other things, uh, you know, we could include many other things. Uh, but I think that this is a, a good ordinance and it's a step in the right direction. Uh, in the future, there's always opportunities to amend, uh, if there are things that we think, uh, can strengthen it. Uh, in the future, we could do that. Uh, but I think what we have before us is a good ordinance. Uh, it will, uh, certainly help in a big way. Uh, and so I, I support it. Uh, and I'll move adoption of, uh, of City Council Ordinance Number twenty twenty dash thirteen. I'll sus-, um, I won't read the ordinance title. Uh, I'll let the city clerk do that, but I, I do move this, uh, ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Crambs?
Yes, and I will second that. It's, uh, perhaps revealing my age a little bit by telling the story of the candy cigarettes that kids used to have. Um, little sticks of candy and they were painted red at the end and you looked cool and you were able to chew and, uh, eat the, eat the fake cigarette. Um, and so that was your candy. Uh, here we are, many years later, um, dealing with candy-flavored vaping, uh, products that essentially are, um, intended to addict you to a nasty, nasty chemical nicotine. And so, um, I'm, uh, supportive of taking action that will limit the number of people that possibly will become addicted to that product. Um, I know the industry is interested in that addiction because it has fueled their financial, uh, you know, great wealth, frankly. And it's unfortunate that we're in that situation. Uh, I find the same thing that is, uh, you know, it, it happens with THC and, and, uh, marijuana products. So, um, I think it's important that we do what we can in this particular instance and, uh, discourage the use of these particular products. Um, meanwhile, um, I do recall my three children growing up and gathering with friends with a hookah pipe and, uh, the, the logistics of it do not lend itself to becoming, uh, the same addictive, uh, substance that these vape products do. So I think we have done the right thing with the existing ordinance. I understand that we have people that are prohibitionists. They want to, they want to terminate, you know, they want to limit the access to any product that may, uh, addict folks. But in the meantime, I think exempting hookah is the right approach. So I appreciate, appreciate where we're at. If, uh, if, if down the road a piece, uh, we're finding that there are uh, greater numbers of, of folks, uh, becoming addicted through the use of hookah, then maybe I'd reconsider. But as it stands now, I do support this measure, uh, hence my second to Councilmember Mosca's, uh, motion.
Okay, thank you. I also support this as the right first step. I'm happy that we're doing it and I'm grateful that the Youth Commission and the staff worked on this and brought it forward. I spoke in front of the Youth Commission with Supervisor Fletcher. I spoke in front of the Youth Commission with Supervisor Fletcher, who came to our district to talk about it after the county passed a similar ordinance. And it's nice to see us here at the finish line. So I think it is consistent with what the state is doing, but the state, it's never certain what the state is doing till the very end. And my recollection is that it passed the Assembly, but now it has to go back to the State Senate, and then, of course, has to be signed by the governor. And there is a lot of campaigning around it right now in terms of the tobacco industry, and you never know what happens with the state bill. So I don't think we should rely on that. So I'll also be supporting this. Okay, well, seeing no other hands up, let's go ahead and vote.
Okay, and I'll just clarify. This is to introduce City Council Ordinance Number 2020-13 titled "An Ordinance of the City of Encinitas Adopting Amendments to Title 11 of the Encinitas Municipal Code." Oh, excuse me, it's on screen. "Encinitas Municipal Code to Prohibit the Sale and Distribution of Flavored Tobacco Products from the City of Encinitas." Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Moska?
Yes, and of course, that's what I meant, because I know that that has to be.
I knew you did. Councilmember Krantz?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henze?
Yes.
And Mayor Blake Spear?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Let's move on to the next item, which is sidewalk vending ordinance.
And I do not have any speakers on this item.
Okay, let's have a brief staff report then, please.
Good evening, City Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, great. Thank you. Jennifer Gates, Principal Planner. All right, before you tonight is the sidewalk vending operations and issuing authority ordinance for specific operations permits. So there's two items and one ordinance that we're going to talk about, as well as the policy. So first, to go over the state law in regards to sidewalk vending, just a little bit about it. So on January 1st, 2019, Senate Bill 946 became law, and it established statewide governance of vending in public parks and rights of way. And cities are now limited in their regulation of sidewalk vending unless a city adopts specific regulations that are directly related to objective health, safety, and welfare concerns. So below, also on the screen, you'll see that localities cannot limit the number of sidewalk vendors that they can permit. They can't outright ban sidewalk vendors in public rights of way. They cannot restrict sidewalk vending to specific areas or specific zones. And they can't prohibit a sidewalk vendor from selling food or merchandise in a city park outright unless there's an exclusive contract with an concessionaire. But localities are able to regulate time, place, and manner of sidewalk vending as long as it's related to health, safety, and welfare. And these include hours of operations, the maintaining of sanitary conditions, complying with disability access standards, as well as requiring them to obtain a use permit and/or a business license, as well as the seller's permit from the state, as you see listed here. So what we're proposing tonight to introduce is Ordinance 2020-15. And what that does is it establishes a new chapter, 6.15, which will permit the council to adopt a policy that will regulate sidewalk vending operations by resolution. It also will amend Sections 6.52050 and Sections 15.08020. And these are in regards to selling on public rights of way, as well as encroachment permits, which does allow as well the display of wares. And this will be consistent, the intent of those amendments is to be consistent with our new sidewalk vending operations permit, if it is adopted. And also, as part of Ordinance 2020-15, staff is recommending some clarifications on the issuing authority for other operation permits that are currently identified to be completed by the city clerk or law enforcement, and to re-identify them as the city manager or his or her designee to allow the city manager to identify who best to issue those permits in the future. Currently, Development Services issues the majority of those permits, or Parks and Rec. So also tonight is a draft policy. And that draft policy will be presented again with a resolution for adoption. And that is what the majority of the staff report is about, is what is proposed in that policy. And it includes regulations that are necessary to prevent interference with public safety personnel in the performance of their duties, to also maintain unobstructed sidewalks and pathways that allow pedestrians and vehicular traffic to continue, also to allow continued public access and use and maintenance of our public facilities, and maximize public access and enjoyment of our public parks and beaches and natural open spaces. And lastly, also to reduce exposure to the city for any personal injury or property damage claims litigation related to sidewalk vending operations. So sidewalk vending operations permit will be required along with a business registration. So the proposed draft policy is identifying the application submitted requirements, permit issuance standards, as well as operation regulations, such as the vending receptacle would be limited to four feet by four feet by eight feet tall. The hours of operation is 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. or sunset in the non-residential areas of the city, and 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. or sunset within the residential areas. The residential hours are actually already set within another section of the city's code. Also, to maintain ADA and other disability access standards along sidewalks or pathways. There are also additional operation regulations. These are just a few that I'm calling out tonight on this PowerPoint. So state law also allows local jurisdictions to adopt additional requirements to regulate the vending in a park owned and operated by a local jurisdiction if the requirements are directly related to objective health, safety, and welfare concerns, are necessary to ensure the public's use and enjoyment of natural resources and recreational opportunities, or necessary to prevent undue concentration of commercial activity that unreasonably interferes with scenic and natural characters of a park. And one of the proposed prohibitive activities includes the prohibition of at least 100 feet from any public community center or pier, and then active, such as a basketball court, active parks. So that's one of some prohibitive activities. We've listed, starting on page four of your staff report, has a table that summarizes all of the locational restrictions, as well as the health, safety, and welfare issues that are addressed by each restriction. The city has a number of unique characteristics requiring that these certain restrictions be in place for sidewalk vending. The city is an active tourist destination with many visual, recreational, and environmental resources. And many of the city's sidewalks are narrow and serve pedestrian travel, as well as support public serving amenities, such as benches and trash receptacles. These are heavily trafficked and traveled areas, and they also must remain free of obstruction for both safety and ADA access. And that is why we're recommending that five feet of passage space must be maintained on all of our sidewalks and pathways to allow that. Also, in residential zones, to prohibit stationary sidewalk vending is allowed. However, the city cannot prohibit roaming vendors in residential zones. Also, the state law does allow the city to prohibit within a certain distance from farmer's markets or swap meets. So any permit that's issued would identify those locations. Also, we're recommending that stationary vendors be prohibited at least 100 feet from any portion of a city facility that is renting merchandise or selling food to the public, which currently we do at Moonlight Beach, as well as the library when it is open. We have a cafe. And lastly, there are recommendations for prohibitive locations that would interfere with individuals coming in and out of buildings or crossing the street. So these would allow people to freely move, as well as prevent any visual issues for pedestrians and vehicles. So the enforcement and penalties are identified as well in the policy. The Senate Bill 946 does limit our penalties and administrative fines, and they are identified in the draft and consistent with the state law. We also identified the specific revocation requirements after the third violation of a city-issued permit and any other reason that's in accordance with our general provisions that are already outlined in Chapter 6.02. And lastly, the permit fees that has been noticed and will be part of that September 9th consideration. If the ordinance is introduced tonight, there'll be a second resolution to identify the permit fee that would be applicable for a sidewalk vending operations permit, as well as the renewal of that permit. So the next steps, if the City Council introduces this ordinance tonight, there will be a second reading of the ordinance on September 9th, currently proposed, along with a resolution to adopt sidewalk vending operations permit policy, as well as a resolution to adopt a sidewalk vending operations permit fee. So the recommendation for tonight from staff is to introduce City Council Ordinance Number 2020-15, as well as to review and comment on the proposed policy that is part of your staff report, and provide any comments that will be brought back in a final policy with the resolution at the next hearing date.
Okay, thank you.
Staff.
Okay, sorry. Did I, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Did you?
No, you're fine. I was just going to say that concludes staff, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. We clearly need this. I'm going to go ahead and move approval.
I'll second it.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Can I, could I have a clarifying question? We could, I could do it after voting. But I did notice a pop-up vendor on the north end of town, on the east side of the 101, essentially parked in the railroad corridor. And it's not really a pathway, and it's not really a sidewalk. So I'm assuming that that is not a place that we would ever authorize somebody to be a vendor. Is that correct?
That is correct. So we have defined what a sidewalk is and a pathway within the policy. And so that was what it would apply to, is in those specific locations. So that question did come up in my head to make sure that was clearly defined, because I could see maybe a median or a landscape median or something like that. So we wanted to make sure we clearly defined where this would be applicable within our public right of way.
And we issue a permit for a particular location, and if the vendor doesn't think that he or she is getting enough traffic in that location, it isn't allowed for them to pack up and move to another location that they deem to be perhaps more brisk in business.
If there are stationary vendor, they would need to update their application and submit it again to the city to look and make sure that the location that they are proposing does not have any provisions associated with it or in maintaining that opening.
Great. And finally, I hope we will make sure that these new guidelines and policies and other operational issues that any vendor might have are provided in multiple languages so that anybody has the opportunity to take advantage of these new rules.
I'll add that as well. And then I also did direct email the two vendors that we have business licenses for currently, and gave them the staff report.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Okay, and you're voting on to introduce City Council Ordinance 2020-15, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Encinitas, California, Amending Titles 6 and 15 of the Encinitas Municipal Code Relating to Issuing Authority for Operations Permits and Implementing a Sidewalk Vending Operations Program." Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Moska?
Yes.
Councilmember Krantz?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henze?
Yes.
And Mayor Blake Spear?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Now we're on to Councilmember Krantz's item. Would you like to explain that or talk about that?
Sure. I know that not long ago, the June meeting we approved, I pulled from consent and submitted some comments about, I think, the value of calming traffic with stop signs. And so we took action on a list of always stops. And it turns out that when we went out to put signs up to say that there was going to be a traffic change, that was the first, many of the people knew of this proposed addition of stop signs. So some of them were concerned about the impacts it would have on their quality of life and were skeptical of some of the benefits that I think would accrue from these signs. But in the meantime, I think it's always been an ethic of the City Council to not necessarily impose things on local neighborhoods. Obviously, there are some situations where that sort of action may be necessary, deemed necessary by the council. But from where I was sitting, I didn't think this was one of those particular times. So as I looked into this a little further, I recognized that our big problem was that this particular issue was on two agendas, the Traffic and Public Safety Commission agenda, as well as our council agenda, without actually notifying any of the residents of these areas where these signs were going to be. And instead, it was essentially the expectation that these people that were going to be impacted receive public notice based upon the usual noticing of items on these agendas. And I think that it should be something that we do a little bit more when we're taking action that can be significant like this. So as you can see from the staff report, I made the suggestion that we consider these sort of implementations of stop signs to be similar to the implementation of speed bumps on streets. And slight miracle not too long ago, ooh, I hate it when I do this, I got a notice saying that the city was considering putting in speed bumps on my street, and that I got a ballot to vote as to whether I wanted to see those speed bumps installed. And it was especially ironic, because this is something that I got involved in city business about 20 years ago regarding this particular issue of speed bumps. And the letter does specify that it should be noted that a minimum document return rate of 50% is necessary for the speed cushion process to continue. Of those returned, 50% must be a yes vote for speed cushions to be installed on high jet. So, you know, it seems to me a program similar to this would be useful for the situation that we currently find ourselves in. I think that we should have this program, this notification program, at least going forward. And I would, in the case of the stop signs at Andrew, Eolus, and Hillcrest, suggest that we take a step back and conduct this survey, have this voting by the neighbors before these stop signs are installed.
Second.
Hang on. So the motion is to do what?
To, so this letter was the result of what is known as the...
If it's to do exactly what we're doing for speed bumps, I don't agree with it. I agree that the public should be involved, especially the people that live right around where a stop sign would go. I definitely want them to have input. However, if you've got a stop sign that is there because maybe two blocks away you have a school, and you've got 16-year-olds driving, or you have people from farther... and you've got 16-year-olds driving, or you have people from farther away, and it's dangerous, but maybe the people right around the area you're putting the stop sign don't want it to change or whatever. I don't want them to have, by voting, that they can say yes to a stop sign or no without taking into effect all the mitigating reasons why the stop sign was even discussed to begin with. I, I wanna make sure it's weighed correctly, because it's a little
Well, as a matter of fact, on these speed bumps, we do have a program where, and it does state that it's, you know, this is the city's first-tier speed cushion program. I would say that we should have the city's first-tier always-stop program. These mitigating circumstances that you described that may require the council to take action without surveying first the neighbors that would be most impacted, then, then I, you know, there will always be that possibility in my estimation. But meanwhile, I think that in this particular case, very few of those factors that you just described are present. And I don't have Abe and the city engineer, city traffic engineer here. And I did read the staff report again, and I recognize that there are some unusual circumstances about this particular intersection. And there are other intersections where we have put up always stops where we didn't hear from anybody. So I get that there are some circumstances where taking the step of sending letters to everybody may not be necessary, but it means
I wanna do that.
Oh, okay.
I agree 100%. I just, I wanna make sure that what I'm not, I just wanna make sure that what I'm voting for is not that 50% of the letters have to come back, and it has to be a yes in order for the stop sign.
That's
That's what I don't
Yeah, that's what you're voting on. And that's the tier program that we have for speed cushions right now.
With something different, because I know one of the stop signs has to do with speeding and kids and some other issues that are farther away that are going through this area. So I just
Let's let staff jump in here. So Lillian has her hand up. Let's let her jump in. Lillian, you want?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I want to emphasize that the staff always wants to ensure that we are providing adequate notice. And we've been increasing the number of stop signs we've been placing in this city over the last several years and prior to the time that I've been here. This is the first real time where we've received this kind of concern. And so at this point, we're taking a very hard look at how we correspond with our residents to ensure they have adequate notice. And I would like to put out an option to the council today to consider when you place a stop sign, and Abe is on the phone, and he can provide greater detail about this particular case, but we apply the California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices Standards. There are a series of criteria, and there are cases where it is absolutely a high level of safety that where a stop sign is recommended as should be implemented for safety and health purposes. There are other instances where it is, to a lesser degree, may be installed. All of these cases will go to Traffic Commission. Our proposal tonight is to suggest that we would, in the event that we find stop signs may or should be placed, that we would notify houses with three or four adjacent to where the stop sign would be placed in all directions to ensure that residents have the opportunity to vocalize their concerns that could be considered then by the Traffic Commission. I do wanna pause here and allow Abe. Abe, are you on the phone to provide greater detail about this particular situation for council consideration?
Yes. Hello, council. My name is Mayor Abe Banigan, City Traffic Engineer here. Yes, as William perfectly put it, we recently, I believe on the same meeting that those previous six always-stop control intersections were presented to council, I think it was a meeting before that, we brought a new City of Encinitas Always-Stop Control Implementation Policy that was basically, the city had a 20, 20, 25-year-old obsolete policy that was point-based system. We brought a new policy that was basically a copy paste of California MTCD that has a very clear warrant analysis process for different intersections. As Lillian mentioned, there are several warrants in there that talk in detail about when a stop sign is warranted based on the number of collisions history in the past year, based on the volume of the major and minor intersecting rows during the eight consecutive hours that you pick based on the speed of the road. There are multiple warrants, and it says if these are met, you should put a stop sign basically there. And there are other options that the traffic engineers advised that they may consider or they can implement always-stop control. Case in point, this intersections that we heard about just recently. This case was, we received complaint from one or two members of the neighborhood that complained about this specific case, but it was not a should put a stop sign. It was one of those cases of may or can put a stop sign. We took it to commission because our policy that was council-approved did not have provisions of public notification like our speed cushion program, as Councilmember Crans mentioned. It was voted for in the commission and then later on at council. So what, what we think we have an idea is not to go exactly similar to our speed cushion program, but allow us to come back to council revising our recently-approved City of Encinitas Always-Stop Control Implementation Policy and incorporate provisions for neighborhood participation, notification, involvement in the process. But at the same time, we wanna be cognizant of the fact that central location, it might be a liability concern if we get to a point where it's like warranted, meeting a lot of warrants, but because of neighborhood vote, we're not able to put the stop sign there. We have those concerns, so we wanna kinda make sure that we're incorporating our engineering standards and guidelines and public participation to merge them together in a safe manner for the city. I don't know if that was clear enough, but allow us to come back with, with the revised policy. This policy, this new one was approved, I believe, less than six months ago. We can show, come back and adjust it to incorporate the council member's concern.
Okay, and then the city attorney had her hand up.
Yes, I was just gonna briefly add, I think Abe kinda said it in just shorter words. It's important that however you do it, that you just have eventual sign off by an engineer to preserve whatever immunities you might have should somebody claim that something was up or lacking that you should have had if there's an accident or something. But I think he said that somewhere in there.
Okay, okay. So the idea it would be to come back with a policy that would involve neighborhoods, and we would rescind the approval of previous stop signs where neighbors were not alerted that they would have a stop sign outside their house. Is that, is that your Councilmember Crans?
Well, I know that some of the stop signs have already been installed, and in most cases, or in several of those cases, there was no objection. They actually welcomed the stop sign. In fact, there's an always-stop now just maybe a half a mile south on Eolus that I don't think anybody sent any emails, and they all welcomed it. It's, it appears. So there have been some stop signs installed, and I'm not necessarily thinking that we should rescind that. But for those people who have communicated with us that they object to it, perhaps those, those areas should be reconsidered. I think the most important thing to me is to, that these folks be heard. And I, I understand what Abe and Director Doherty are saying in terms of just notification, but one of the benefits of the voting is that you get a better sense of whether the greater neighborhood actually embraces it. Because I think one of the tendencies is that the folks who are the loudest are the ones who you hear from. And so, and there are, I have heard from some people who support these particular stop signs. So giving everybody an opportunity to, you know, cast their vote and count them, I think, is beneficial. But in the meantime, I think that as long as we're incrementally increasing notification, I would be satisfied with that. And I do think that this particular location should get the attention of Abe and his associates. And we engage the neighbors in a fairly vigorous conversation about some of the alternatives that they have proposed.
Okay, let's go to Councilmember Mosca.
Yeah, I think as Abe and Lillian were saying, I think what, especially what we have with a lot of times with initiated items is that the staff would take a stab at putting together some sort of policy and bringing it back to us. So I think that that would be appreciated, bringing it back to us. I did think it was, you know, it may be trying to fit a square peg into a circle when you try to fit this under the, the, the kind of street calming measures. Only, only because a lot of times with the calming measures, I've, I've had a lot of experience with this now, because there's a lot of folks in my district that seem to write to us on a regular basis and wanna give rise to this. But generally, how it works is that somebody, you know, a group of people get together and they say that, you know, that there's fast-moving vehicles on the road and it's unsafe. They get together and circulate a petition to have some street calming measures put in. And so it just doesn't seem to be the same. I think what, what Abe was talking about in terms of the all-way stop policy, I think that bringing that policy back and amending it to kind of bring in the spirit of what Councilmember Crans is talking about, which is, you know, over, over-notification. I do think that in the case where, what Councilmember Hubbard was talking about, in the case where, where, where it's abundantly clear that you need a stop sign, and, and, and public opinion is not gonna change the fact that if you don't put a stop sign, you're gonna have an issue. And so I think in those situations, to set proper expectations, it would be fair to send out notifications, not necessarily polling people. In the situation where there's, where there may be some opportunities where stop signs are optional and may even actually help, always-stop may actually help the situation, calm it down, and may help public safety, and it is optional, then I think that there is a, there is a kind of comparison, if you will, to the calming policy. And perhaps what we should do is do like we do under that other policy and send out, send out, you know, send out notices for people to vote. But again, it is different, because this would be essentially the city staff kind of initiating something, I suppose, unless it's the community coming forward saying they want always-stops.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think there are hundreds of different ways we could do this and endlessly talk about it. I mean, my preference would be that we do send it to the staff to come back with a suggestion, so we're talking about a real proposal. And in the meantime, to take back the approval of the previous stop signs, like, I did find that comment this morning, or not this morning, at the beginning of this meeting to be troubling, you know, that people have stop signs that are going in right outside their house that affects their driveway and this kind of thing, and they'd never heard of it. So I do think for the ones that have yet to go in, it'd be a good idea for us to, to hold back and see what the new policy is. Councilmember Hubbard, do you have your hand up again? You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry, there was something in front of it, and I couldn't get it to go away. I see that we did all stops. What about if it's just one stop or, you know, on one side? Why wouldn't we have whatever policy we come up with? Why wouldn't it apply to that also?
Let's see what they bring back.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, it just seems like
I think it would.
Included.
Yeah. Okay, so is that seem to be direction? Does staff have clear direction? Lillian and Abe?
Yes, ma'am, we have clear direction. Thank you.
Okay, so
I would just like to say again that I very much appreciated them bringing this forward. I am not a fan of the warrant system, because it requires that somebody get hit and hurt before it gets warrant points. So the thrust of what you're, you're doing is, I applaud that. So thank you very much. But let's do it with making sure that all, all the neighbors are aware this is coming.
Okay, so we're not gonna vote. We just have consensus from the comments. Yeah, and then it'll come back to us. Maybe the policy should go back to the Traffic Commission first.
Do we not have to vote to suspend the installation of a couple of those stop signs?
Yes.
We may not wanna vote on that, because I don't know that that was on the agenda. Maybe just give direction.
Okay, direction, that's fine.
Great.
Okay, Abe, do you have your hand up?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Just this last statement that we heard, I wanted clarification on that, because I do know that we have work orders in the queue as Councilmember Crans mentioned, and some of, some of those locations already have their stop signs. So we want to hold the ones that have not gone in yet as of now, or wanna go back and remove them? Well, I, I think I need, I need a little bit of clarification on the status of the sticks that were approved by council.
I would give direction to not install anymore and bring that policy back, and then go from there. But I see Leslie wants to talk.
Right. I was just gonna say, I think it, consistent with direction, staff's kinda heard the sentiment of the council and can act accordingly. As far as taking stop signs out, that should probably come back to council with some discussion if that's where you wanna go, as well as some information from the traffic engineer.
Yeah.
So whatever is in, it will remain. The ones that are not in, I'll, will, will basically ask tomorrow morning to stop those work orders. But whatever is in will remain.
Right.
Yeah, ask a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
So the ones that are in the queue or pending, have we put out the signage yet on those locations to alert the neighbors that there will be a stop sign in that location?
No, Deputy Mayor. As mentioned, our current policy is copy paste of MTCD, and nowhere in MTCD warrants a process. Anywhere indicates the need for a neighborhood vote or acceptance for stop signs.
Yeah, I, but I remember that this specific location on Eolus, there was some signage put out that said there will be a stop sign in this place, and that's how those neighbors became aware of that upcoming stop sign.
Correct. Our Public Works Department, when they wanna install traffic control being a signal or a yield or a stop sign, after we receive our work orders, which is at that point is basically a done deal and then a finalized decision, they, for, for, for the purpose of basically being able to install it without any kind of irresistible, I mean, this, this is a perfect case of it, they, they put these signs out there. But those are not notifications from traffic team. Those are from our Public Works Department, usually a week or two in advance of installing signs.
Okay, so currently, those stop signs in the queue, they don't have any Public Works notifications up?
If they're, if they're installed, I gotta go back and find out what the date of those work orders were. If the signs are already installed, that means those notification signs from Public Works were there a week or two in advance.
Okay.
But, yeah, but, but Public Works does that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that there aren't, there aren't locations in the city that have the Public Works signage up, that those neighbors are now anticipating a stop sign and would be disappointed if one wasn't installed.
We'd have to gather more information on that to find out if we have signs from Public Works set, and the stop signs are in the queue to be, to actually be installed very soon. But my understanding, based on the information I just received, is that even, even if the sign from Public Works is up that says we're gonna install a stop sign here, and even if it's scheduled to be done tomorrow, we will stop it. We will not install any more stop signs starting from tomorrow, even if the notice is from Public Works is off.
Okay, well, that's good to know. I think that, that this, a lot of neighbors are asking for stop signs, and I get that request a lot. And so I'm fine with the, the understanding we've come to tonight, but it's not every circumstance that the neighbors don't wanna stop sign. I think this was kind of an unusual one, that they didn't want that. So
How, how many stop signs are we talking about at this point? Do we know that haven't been installed yet? Or how many areas? I don't care about if it's three or two or four. It's just how many area, you know, how many areas are left? Because maybe if we could, the council members could weigh in after they've talked to their constituents or if they have some knowledge about it. Like, I certainly had knowledge about a stop sign here in Cardiff, two of them. And they've gone in and they're smooth and they're great. And one of them, they would have been incredibly disappointed if it got held up. And Councilman, Councilmember Henze, you may have one of those in your area that you already know that the people want it and it's a non-issue. There's no reason to stop it if we're talking a couple. Sorry, Lillian.
I think
Take your way.
Oh, sorry, Lillian, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just referencing the prior staff report, and we had seven that were approved in June. And my understanding, Abe, have we installed three of the seven locations?
I don't have, I do believe our team submitted the work order for all of them. So, but we usually don't control the scheduling of the installation. That's done by, by our friends at Public Works. So I can ask them to find out So I can ask them to find out the status of those work orders to see which ones are fulfilled, which ones are in the queue and not get happened, but I don't have the exact number.
I know three of them have gone in for sure.
Would it be helpful for me to read off the locations or we can just report back?
Report back.
I'm fine with them being reported back. I seem to recall most were in Cardiff and Lucadia.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. The next items are any council member reports, attorney reports, city manager reports. Does anybody have anything they would like to say? No? Okay.
Mayor Blake Spear, can I just have a minute or two? I just want to update you on the election.
Absolutely.
And the public. So I just wanted to bring some information to light. There's a lot of information on the San Diego County Registrar Voters website. That's very helpful. And that is sdvote.com. The San Diego County Registrar Voters is committed to ensuring that voters can exercise their right to vote in a safe, secure, and accessible manner during the 2020 Presidential General Election. In light of COVID-19, every registered voter in California will be receiving a ballot in the mail for the upcoming election. So what does this mean for us? In San Diego County, nearly 75% of the registered voters are already signed up to permanently vote by mail. This time, everyone will receive a ballot. So what they're requesting is that people be prepared. Make sure you check your registration. Several postage cards have gone out to every registered voter to verify that you are still at that residence. Make sure that if you've moved, changed your name, any of those things that you go on and that you register to vote. Even though ballots are going to be mailed out to every single voter, there will still be the opportunity to vote in person. Polling places will be open for four days. But however, there's going to be fewer locations than in prior elections. So most likely, your polling place will have changed. If you need to vote in person, we urge you to take advantage of early voting. The registrar's office, beginning October 5th, Monday through Friday, from 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. at your assigned polling place or the registrar's office, Saturday, October 31st, through Monday, November 2nd, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And all will again be open on Election Day, November 3rd, when the voting hours are 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So again, make sure that you are registered to vote. Make sure that you have verified that all the information is correct. And the other issue is make sure that if you are voting by mail, your sample ballot will have posted paid. So you don't have to worry about putting a stamp on it. It's already going to be paid. Make sure that you do it early. Don't wait until Election Day. Don't wait until the day before. As soon as you get your sample ballot, it would be very helpful for the registrar voters and the postal service if you get it, get your ballot, fill it out, and put it in the mail as quickly as possible. So thank you.
Kathy, there's also, there will be some drop boxes. I think traditionally, there are drop boxes at the library up on Cornish and maybe the Cardiff Library. Are there any other locations where there will be registrar voter drop boxes instead of the postal system?
There will be several drop boxes. They haven't finalized all the locations yet. But as soon as I get them, I'll post that information. But there are going to be several throughout the city. And again, like I said, there won't be your traditional polling places, but there'll be some larger polling places. And those are in the final stages of being finalized.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, everybody. With that, we're adjourned.